Good afternoon, everyone. Today is December nineteenth, two thousand sixteen, work session of the Salisbury City Council. First up is Susan Phillips.
Actually, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
There's one presentation first.
Oh, okay.
I didn't know if it got on the, uh...
It's not on the agenda.
I'm sorry.
The Maryland...
Yeah.
We thought it would be at the end, but...
Oh, at the end, this one? They're gonna stick around anyway. It's your meeting, not mine. Sorry.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm here to discuss a donation of one thirty-seven Delaware Avenue. This property is owned currently by GNI. And this is a fire-damaged house that's just been sitting there for quite some time. And it's in an area that we're interested in right now and possibly doing some work with the Community Development Initiative that we currently have in place. So I contacted GNI and asked them if they'd be interested in donating it to the city of Salisbury as is, with possibly looking at the city demoing the structure. And I'm just in the very early stages of talking to Public Works about demoing this property. We would save a considerable amount of money by doing it in-house rather than getting a third-party contractor to do it. With doing that, we would be taking on all of the environmental clearances and taking care of that cost and then also the tipping fees, but we would be saving all of the labor with the third-party contractors. So that is not etched in stone by any means, just in the early stages of talking to Public Works about it. No commitment has been made. If that can't be done, I do have some grant money that I can use. And I could use the grant money for the tipping fees and for the environmental clearances, like the asbestos removal. So I have that worked out. There are no debts associated with the property. They have a zero balance. And attached, you'll see the resolution accepting the donation. Does anybody have any questions?
I do. What would you be doing with the property?
There is quite a bit of, quite a few things we could do with the property. We could, we have a list of properties, vacant properties right now that we have. First thing we're gonna do is demo it right off the bat. We have some that's for sale, some vacant lots that's for sale. Honestly, the best thing that we could do is try to work with a developer that would build low-income houses. That would be our, our primary plan.
Would that be the same as those that are on the Lake Street area, Lake and Tangier, Lake and Rose?
It could be with the same. We've been talking to the Housing Authority. We've been talking to different people with that organization. That could be a possibility, but there's no guarantee. It's just in the very early stages.
Okay.
But that is the area where we're looking at doing some work on.
Okay.
What is GNI's responsibility for this house if we don't take it?
We will tear it down and build them.
So in effect, we're going to tear it down and incur the cost ourselves?
But will we take in the value of the property?
True. Agree.
I do think it doesn't...
I'm worried about precedent, and maybe it's only precedent in my head, and if I'm the only one, I'm okay with it, because I'm okay with it. But if we take capital off and we take this, I'm just concerned, you have a burnout house. I mean, it isn't the same situation like on North Division Street where a developer came to us and said, "I'd like to take this house. It has had the fire." Ask us to change the zoning a bit to make it more attractive for something to happen to it instead of just sitting there. Understand, I'm just wondering about, I guess, is, is this a particular shift in policy and vision, or if we do this one and other ones come to us and say, "Is this a case by case?" Is this just a case-by-case basis?
Maybe, is this, is the goal of this property to become an owner-occupied residence?
Yeah.
Instead of it as it's currently at will?
This is, yeah. That's...
That's, but that's the goal if the house hadn't been on fire either. So I'm, I'm, I'm not sure that. I'm just trying to figure out when a company with the amazing holdings that this particular company has and all the resources in the world to fix this house up itself, all the resources in the world to fix up this house itself, why come to us or why go to them? I can understand Councilwoman Shields had a great aunt who was like ninety-four and had a house that, you know, we couldn't even find out who, you know, for a long time, who the, who the appropriate owners were. But this is a, a company of record. Why are they not doing it themselves?
If they do it themselves, then the, the only difference is if they do it themselves, they'll turn it back into exactly what's there today. We, this puts us just in a position of control. And we probably won't be the developer. I mean, we certainly won't be the developer, so we won't turn it into whatever's next. But this gives us the position of control where we can dictate what comes next.
I think what I'm saying is our position of control would be over the code, which was over top this property. I'm not sure whether or not we're in a position of anything if we're going to take properties from major companies that have the ability to fix them rental or not, because if I were to say, "I don't want this to be rental anymore," then it would be misconstrued. Some people in the room can say it. I cannot. It's okay. I'm good with it. I know my place. I'm just saying, why isn't this company doing it themselves? And I don't wanna be, I don't want it to look like we've decided for the sake of harmony to take properties from the second or third-largest grossing company in the city, rental company in the city.
This house in particular had, case-by-case, it had nothing other to do than the location. This is one that, because of the CDI, we are looking at this particular location because we feel that area is in need of some revitalization, and that's merely the only thing.
Correct. But that area has always been in need of revitalization. I'm not sure why this property, is there one next door that we have that we own? Is there a lot or is there...
Yes, right across the street.
Okay. Can you give me a broader picture now?
Yes. Right across the street, I'm working on acquiring one twenty-sixth Delaware Avenue. There was some vacant land to the right of it that I'm working on acquiring. I'm working with the bank. So in working with the bank and looking at these deeds, and I've got this map laid out on my desk, and I'm looking at the, in the, in the next six months trying to acquire these properties, I realized, you know, like a light bulb went off in my head, well, there's this burnout house right here. I'm gonna call GNI and just say, "Hey, will you give this property to us?" And I called and they said yes, because I'm trying to acquire as much as I can in that area to really make a change on that street, to really bring it back.
I, I, I can honestly see what she's saying, because there hasn't been any renovation or redevelopment in that particular area since I can remember, and that's been a long time. So I can understand, we've got these houses on Lake Street. We're trying to redevelop and revitalize the Lake Street area, the Road Street, the Tangier area. And these are our minority, this is our minority, strictly minority district. We do need some redevelopment in that area. I feel as though if, I'm like you at one point, why is GNI willing to just let this property go loosely, you know, without a fight or without even trying to redevelop? But I think, from my aspect, I think they're just tired of that general area. You know, they're just, it's, it's tangible and it's just, you know...
Could we make a stipulation that if we take the property and the lot goes up for sale, that it has to be sold into somebody who's gonna build something for homeownership? Because if we take the property and tear down the property and then put the lot back on the market and another company picks up that property and builds another rental, then we have paid, the neighborhood has paid for a burnout house. We've paid to have a property demolished.
If we own it, we can do that.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I'd like to make a motion that if we're gonna do that, that we make sure the stipulation is, is when the lot is sold, that the house that's being built on that lot...
Our, our plan is to turn these properties...
Our plan was also to have the code keep that from happening, and that hasn't happened. So let's, let's, let's try and find out how we can...
And the goal right now with CDI is to focus on three target neighborhoods, and this being one of them, and try to concentrate those resources into, you know, the areas that are most in need of that redevelopment. And in every case, to try to turn it into owner-occupied. And we can do that through a deed restriction, or not a deed restriction, through a covenant?
Yes.
You can definitely do that.
Through covenant.
So I would make the motion that through, what did you just call it?
Covenant.
Through covenant, that we make sure that, that the lot, when it gets rebuilt on, that the house has to be for homeownership.
Yes.
Yes.
Everybody, so with that, you're supportive of the second one?
Yeah, I just, I've just, I'll have to take Councilwoman Jackson to lunch, because I almost voted against this one. And I did vote against capital off, and I want to make sure the residents of the first district don't think that there's something that I have against redevelopment in the district. There is something that I have against bailing out people who haven't taken responsibility for their property.
And I, I, I agree, I agree with you one hundred percent. But two, also, there are so many abandoned houses that are making our community look like eyesores.
Yeah.
You know, plenty of in, in, in the first district community. And if this is what we have to do, if we have to take them from these people, or they, if they're willing to donate this land to us, because it's evident, they're not gonna do anything with it. So it's just gonna sit there in our communities and be an eyesore. So I, I totally agree with what Susan says, and I agree with you on the other hand. But we have to do something, because our community in my, that, that district is in need of housing, is in need of homeownership, and is in need of redevelopment and revitalization.
And I think to the councilman's point, it's, it's not altruistic. It is, it is sort of a bailout. I mean, that's what it is. It, there is a, there is a financial benefit to not...
Now you may be both know if you say that.
No, but I mean, but let's be honest, you know, that's what we're talking, but, but it's targeted, and I think, you know, it's not just a blanket statement. So while it could be seen as precedent-setting, as long as we don't allow it to expand beyond our focus area, you know, where the CDI program is focused and trying to make a change, and we're careful about where those dollars go, and very articulate about, you know, the limited use of those dollars, and then use the covenant restrictions, I think that'll limit the precedent.
Well, let me ask something. Was he ever told to even, even fix this property up or was he ever in violation or anything?
Yes.
And he...
There's a rehab plan in place, and he's, he's still within that period.
So how long is rehab?
I wanna say it's probably due in February of two thousand seventeen.
How about we do this? And we can ask Mayor, if you can ask the Council President, or when, if you meet with the mayor, if we could get a list of the places that we have demolished and the places that we have put, you know, lots back up for sale. I know, I think there's two, there's two on my street as well. Maybe we should get an idea of what's moving, what's not moving, so that when we do take something like this, because you'll have to put a for-sale sign on the lot, won't you? Yeah, I just, it's not on the tax roll. I mean, it is on the tax rolls now. It comes off while we own it, and then it goes back on, and we bail on out. Come on back to vote no again.
I think maybe that with maybe a future discussion with you on, on your plan, on, on what you're trying to do, I think would be, would be appropriate at, at a future work session.
The plan...
Susan, do you wanna talk about the plan that you're gonna be sending up to me?
Yeah, I do. I had originally planned on coming, I wanna say maybe around the, the end of the first quarter of the, of the calendar year, coming in to discuss this with everyone, but I can give you like a, a really quick, now, what we're gonna be focusing on are the, on three districts in the city. The first district would be the, and these are not in any order of necessity at all, just pointing them out, would be the Church Street area. That would be one district. The second would be in the, this area that we're talking about now. And then, and then the second one would be the Camden Heights area. And what we're gonna do is we're really gonna drill down and focus on these three areas, and that's gonna be basically our five-year plan. And if you look at these mapped out, they basically hover right corner to the downtown area. And all the, bringing the landlords into this, talking to the landlords, every, they tell me that everybody wants to live close to downtown. So I think it's best to really bring the property values up around our downtown area, because that's where everybody, the infill seems to be going. So what we're trying to do is bring the property values up in those districts, in those areas. But at the same time, if you look at the area of the Delaware Avenue, the Lake Street area, if you go over to Church Street, and if you go over to Camden Heights, that's where our oldest housing stock is. And it's been so long since any revitalization's been done. That's where we need, really need to put focus in. That's where we need to find grant money. That's where we need to focus our code enforcement and follow right up with grant money and to really make some effect, because it's been so long since that's been done, if, if ever, that, that's where we're gonna see the, the main results. So I'll have more statistics and more facts to show you when I come back. This is all very new, and that's the direction that we're going into. And that's why I've been hovering around the Delaware air, Delaware Avenue area, trying to acquire some properties, because there's some vacant land there. There's another abandoned house, and then I saw this house. It's like, as soon as I saw this, I wanted to grab hold of it, because it goes right into our plan. So I'm trying to acquire things while I can. It's, that, I can see where this can be viewed as a bailout to the property, but in no means am I trying to bail GNI out. I'm just trying to acquire a property that was once a rental and get it back and, back, 'cause it was once homeownership, get it back into something viable for a family to use. That's the only intention.
And there are a couple other facets with respect to vacant properties that we'll be bringing forward in the new year, in terms of encouraging homeownership. So we've got a couple of their ideas.
Yeah, we, definitely there's gonna be some incentives that we're gonna be bringing along with this, and when we come to a presentation, everything will be laid out. Explain it.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Are you supporting this?
Are you still stuck, Jim? You stuck?
I can't support it. I'm sorry.
You can?
I cannot.
You cannot?
I'm able to support it. I just, I, I, I have questions about the greater scheme of things, and I understand we wanna move it to homeownership, and I know that there's sort of a default sense that homeowners are better than renters. And I just wonder, you know, it might seem instinctively the correct direction to go, but when you're talking about modern populations, younger people tend to be in transit more. They move as their jobs move them, and people are staying in the same jobs for less time. And then I also wonder, you know, and you'll inform us of this towards the end of the first quarter of twenty seventeen, you know, of course, the word that is ringing in the back of my brain is gentrification, and then how are the populations in the current area gonna feel about that? And we have two low-income rental housing units coming up, and are we just moving people from these communities into those units? And then who are the populations going to be that purchase this home or these properties? You know, I'm just wondering about several things. It sounds good, and I would support it, because, you know, we don't need to have a burnt-out home, because that becomes problematic with other issues. But, you know, I have several questions, and I, and I hope I planted some seeds for some questions you'll be able to answer.
Well, yeah, and, and Councilwoman Jackson will, will understand what I'm saying is, what I'm seeing in the Delaware Avenue area is the homeowners that are living there are becoming very old. Mr. Theodore, they're, they're leaving, they're having to leave their homes. The houses are crumbling and falling apart. They're sitting there, they're becoming vacant. We've gotta do something to the neighborhood to, to rehab.
If it was Mr. Theodore's house, I'd agree to take it immediately.
Yeah. So, and, and that's another one that we're gonna have to deal with soon. That's happening, that's just one of the ones. I've got a handful of these properties. I've probably got six of these homes in that neighborhood. What's happening is they're falling in on themselves. If we don't do something, we're really having code enforcement problems en masse in that, just that one area. I, as a housing official, cannot sit and let this happen. So we've gotta have a plan to fix this. So this is the plan, so...
And I don't disagree with you.
Yeah, because most of those homes over there were owned. They were owned, the owners, they had ownership. And I too, you know, those people are, Professor Chipman owned property over there, the Stewards owned property over there, several people, Mr. Theodore, he owned property over there, several people, the Alberts owned property over there, and the Reitz owned property over there. So I, I'm, 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 go ahead.
I was getting ready to say, you know, it would be really nice if we had somebody who came in here at some time, who builds these developments, that gets the tax credits. I'm saying that, 'cause there are people who are in the room who do that. And maybe at some point, some of them started to do it in single-family neighborhoods. That's, that's what we need, because I'll be honest with you, it's very hard for me to vote, it's very hard for me to vote for more of them out on the edge of the city along, you know? But I do, because we need houses, we need apartments that are affordable. And if you bought every one of those on Delaware Avenue from estates that can't, we can't figure out who they're from, you know that I'm, I'm right there with you. I just, I will just say to you, I did not use the word bailout. But I, but we have a boatload of, of property, lots, that if we could convince one of these companies that comes in and gets the tax credit for hundreds of units, and that's probably what makes it affordable for them to do through the government, but if that's part of the plan, I look forward to seeing it.
It is, and we're in talks on that.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, is it gonna be affordable housing? Or even if it's in homeownership?
Yeah, which leads back to you, yeah.
Just like the houses on Lake Street and Road Street, or those are affordable housing. So that's what I wanna see, affordable housing for people with homeownership.
And in fact, to Ms. Jackson, to your point, one of the things that we're in talks about right now is taking some of these, because we actually own quite a few scattered lots. If you assemble that and package it, you know, it might be a financeable thing, like a, like a large lot for a multifamily project. And, and then it's more likely that, more likely than in a building of, of apartments that could turn into condominiums, which people aren't likely to pursue. In this case, you potentially could do a rent-to-own, where eventually over a period of fifteen years or so, it could become an owner-occupied. And in, in some of these cases, what they've done is it automatically becomes an owner-occupied. Once you vest a certain number of years, it becomes an automatically owner-occupied vehicle. And, and it's something that, you know, we've, for large, large subdivisions, we've looked at with skepticism, but maybe scattered throughout the city, it could be a, it could be a positive.
Does this one lose its designation as a rental in that neighborhood when it gets sold to someone who doesn't own the property anymore?
It's exceptional.
Is it, is it?
It doesn't have an exception for three or four. Any structure can always return back to a rental, but it doesn't have a three or four.
Unless we have that covenant on, that covenant restriction.
Right. But if we put the covenant, it will be a no-no.
Well, if you all are doing that, I'll start sending you pictures every day of places that I think need your attention. Can we do that?
You know, we can complain, so...
I look forward to doing that. You know, have your drive around. It'll take Harvey, man.
Yeah, that's fine.
Well, I, I can, I can show you quite a few myself, but I, I just, I'm just so adamant about redeveloping not only just the first district, but all the areas that need to be redeveloped. It's just not based on this, because it's a total minority district. There are a lot of abandoned homes all through this city, and there's no need for it to be. And my thing is, why aren't we more pursuing these homeowners or these, the people who own these properties? Why aren't we stricter with our enforcement?
We actually are. They're, they're the ones that are tying up our court cases. It's, it's hard to find them, get them into court. It's a harder process when they're absentee, they're out of state. It's, it's much harder with those.
But something worth pointing out is that we have ninety-one percent success rate in terms of compliance, meaning somebody gets notified that they're doing something wrong and with code enforcement, and they comply. Over ninety percent, it's between ninety and ninety-one percent. And the remaining nine percent, some portion of them are non-compliant and have to go to court, but the remaining portion, you know, they get cited multiple times and they eventually comply. And those that go to court, we have a one-hundred percent success rate with them. So you do not win if you fail to comply with the code.
But if that were the case, wouldn't this house be being fixed up?
Well, no. We're offering them an opportunity to be acquired.
It's under a plan now, currently.
And it is, it is under a rehab plan.
And, and I know what you're saying, they're the ones that are not getting service on, because they're, they're out of town, we can't locate them, they're living in Washington State, it's impossible to get them, or they're deceased.
Well, let me ask this question. If you were the one who made contact with GNI, did we ask GNI whether or not they were gonna abide by the, the plan?
They have, they have a rehab plan, so they're, they're still in compliance until their rehab plan expires.
Well, was their rehab plan to rehab it?
Yes.
Well, if they were planning to rehab it, why would we take it?
Once again...
Back into a rental situation.
If we wanted to become an owner-occupied property. And, and I wanted to address this, actually, because Mr. Russo brought up an interesting point about why homeownership? Why promote, why choose to promote homeownership? So one of the things that, as we set our goals for the next four years at the goal-setting session, one of the conclusions of that process was that homeownership was going to be an objective, increasing homeownership was gonna be an objective. So it's a policy pursuit of ours to increase that. And the reason being is, although you have to be, we have to be cautious to not gentrify neighborhoods and not dis, or not displace people, I think one of the things that we recognize is that increased homeownership leads to improved property values, no matter who's living in the house. And in, in most of these cases, in most of these neighborhoods, the stable neighborhoods are the ones with a higher homeownership rate. And we have a depressed homeownership rate locally, so although generationally more people are pursuing, fewer people are pursuing homeownership, you know? You know, millennials are not as frequently pursuing homeownership. However...
They don't wanna own cars.
And there's that, too, right? So it's kind of a, it's kind of a trend, but in, in our city, we are, we have a depressed rate of homeownership. It's about thirty-three percent. We have fewer people that own homes here than in most of America. So if it were to increase slightly, it could have positive economic impacts for that neighborhood without having an overall net detriment on, you know, any population or any socioeconomic strata.
To be anecdotal, when I was, and I chose to live on the peninsula, and when I finally found a job here, one of the biggest challenges for me was finding a rental that I could afford, and all the rentals that I could afford. It's the truth.
Really? You said that out loud? Thank you. I'm glad you said that out loud.
And the ones that I could afford were very difficult to access, and the quality of service I was receiving was so poor, they would want a credit check before they would even show properties to me. And I ended up living on Maryland in life for some time. So, you know, I understand this needs to come down, even if they were to rehab it, I don't think that it will be rehabbed to something that's truly habitable by a family or people. That's why I'm for this, because these homes need to come down, and something more appropriate needs to go up. So, I mean, I'm, I'm for this, but you know...
Harvey, let's take a look at that property, and then I promise you, this, this is much more fun than I thought it was gonna be. I thought it was just gonna be as simple. You know, it's on here and go.
Yeah, I was thinking it was only thirty-seven pages.
But what do you think, what do you think the average house price is when something is sold on Delaware Avenue? Because my question to you is, even if you got it, tore it down, put it up for sale, and had somebody buy it, couldn't anybody build a structure?
That's profitable, because those are going like forty-four thousand in that community.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, I can tell you what the land value is probably gonna be, and that land value's probably gonna be about eight thousand.
I'll buy that today. If I didn't have to demolish the home that was on it.
Well, and one of the proposals that we'll be bringing to you in January is to incentivize construction on single-family lots in the city. So we'll be, we'll be bringing that forward. It's not a hundred percent finished, but it's cooking.
Mr. Council Vice President, you did say we were gonna put in a stipulation that something would have to be built for homeownership, correct?
Yes.
Then I will go ahead and vote yay with the group.
Your yes, your yes, your yes, and I support this, and thank you for coming, coming up with this plan and, I guess, keep your eyes open for more properties.
And we'll send you pictures on our phone.
Jim will be out hunting the properties for you.
He's using Twitter when something's up.
When she look, she'll be saying, "Where was this coming from? April, party, Jim, man."
Thanks, Susan.
Next up is Mike Mould.
Okay, that's the one?
First one is the budget amendment to the Main Street Mashup.
Yes, good evening.
Yes, good evening, everybody. Um, what we're seeking is to get the process moving for a budget amendment to establish contingency funds for the Main Street project. If you recall, uh, we, we got the original proposals for the Main Street project, they were over budget. We were able to negotiate with the contractor to get it down, so we could proceed with the contract there. So, uh, one of the things that's priority now is establishing contingency money for things that may come up during the construction progress. And as one of those things, as we alluded to on, uh, last Monday, was the remediation work that we've got to do. So before we can have our contractors under contract through procurement, we've got to identify those funds. So fortunately, um, through the project, if you've noticed, they're cleaning up the Beaver Dam reconstruction out there. It's turned out really nice, the contractor's pulling out. So, uh, we were able to get that contract in substantially below what we had when we got the bond money set aside for it. Originally, I think it was 1.2 million.
So what did it come in as?
We came in, it was around a little over $600,000, I think.
Yep, just under that.
So the, the contractor, as you can imagine, used a very unique approach with that huge barge that he just parked in front of the dam, and was able to access it and do it very efficiently. Um, they've completed the dredging work, which is another thing that was outstanding. So raise, basically, all they have left to do, which have to wait till the spring, is, is stabilize the grass, whether it's torn up and get new grass seed grown and everything like that. So we are confident in what numbers we've got. So that money for the dam project was in the same bond pool as Main Street Master Plan. So we don't have to do a bond amendment. We can transfer those funds within that bond and associate it with Main Street Master Plan, so we can keep moving ahead with the remediation work that we need to get done there. So, uh, the bond amendment that we've got, uh, ordinance is $547,000 is moving from the Beaver Dam project to the Main Street Master Plan construction project. That's what we're looking at.
Is, you go. I was going to say, you, you and I usually have the same questions in this particular area. Okay, first off, I wouldn't be in support of sending all of that bond money that was in that, and I'll have a conversation with the mayor offline about why we think that that was $700,000 off, because I was the one that sent it to you too. So that, I think we need to have a question about why some, why something was $700,000 off. Could you tell us what you think you're going to need for the remediation? Because I'm not comfortable just taking all of that bond money and just putting it over here for expenses.
Um, I don't know if we have a final number yet on that, because, uh, we've gotten it, we've worked out with the contractor on what subcontract they're, they're going to use. They have to be an expert in tuning the remediation in terms of the setup. And the other thing you don't know is how long we're going to have to do the remediation, because as long as the ditches are open. And as we, well, the hope here is that we move down the street towards division, we're going to get out of this area that we're in now. So that's an unknown, but the key is to be able to have those funds available, because we can't authorize the contractor to continue doing the work. So it's a case of having those funds available. If we don't end up having to use them, they would be available for transfer to another project. But it's to have that pot. Otherwise, we can't get a change order authorized, and the contractor can't doing his work. And what I don't want to see is we move down the street and we run into these remediation costs, and then they have, everything grinds to a halt, uh, until we go through another budget amendment that we have to do. And as you know, it takes some time, several meetings to get that going and holding the contract up.
And if I, if I may, um, that question that you just asked, Mr. Irtin, is something we've, we should definitely discuss. And, um, I don't have a solid answer to you right now, but we'll, we can figure that out, but, but...
What did we spend the other night on the remediation?
Uh, the, that was the...
The contractor.
The subcontractor.
That was for the engineering firm to have a...
And where are we with the permit at the governor's office, or in MDE?
MDE.
Do we know where we are with the permit?
So until, we have to get the proposal from Carrato, who's our contractor. We've agreed to the approach and who they're going to use, and now they're getting us the formal proposal. And once they get us that and we approve that, they'll take it to MDE and get the permit. So they've been working with MDE along the whole process. And MDE knows who the subcontractor is we're proposing to use and what the method is. So we're waiting for that last piece, and then we can get that permit.
So, so the remaining funds that were bonded with these two projects, it can do one of two things. It can be used for the Beaver Dam project, which is done, so we don't need any money for that, or this. Or we've got to reissue the bonds, we've got to go through Lindsey Raider, and, um, we're going to have to start spending money to make it available for other projects. So it, you know, if it's going to be used for Main Street, it's as simply as doing what you're doing right now. And if it's going to be used for anything else, we have to, we have to go through bond counseling.
I understand that. I just lived through the years of, oh my God, we found 17 bond lines that have money left over. Let's use it for other stuff. And now, I, I feel like we go, oh, look, there that is.
Well, this is...
Because to me, the taxpayers have already paid that money. And they paid that 1.2 million based on the project that I told them about. I'm not saying it's not nice to have extra money left over, but not, you know, close to, close to $600,000. I still, do we have an estimation from the people who are going to clean up what we have noticed so far, how much that would cost?
We do not have that yet, no.
The, the process that we've got to go through is to get the budget amendment set up. Again, it's not worth saying that that money is going to be exclusively used for that, or just what that's do. There may be other things that may be coming up in the project that we may want to do. You know, there are changes that you do, whether, it's there, but it's having that contingency or, or available money. And it's not like that we, we necessarily have to spend it all for that project. It's there, if the project's done and we have that money left over, it could be repurposed. And we go through that whole process that we, that the mayor mentioned in terms of going to Lindsey and doing the bond transfer and everything. Basically, we have that money sitting there for that project. And I, I can't answer on where that money, where that estimate came from.
Well, one project was under bid, and one, and the other project was over bid.
And, and I'm glad the Beaver Dam was under bid, because that made that a money available. We could have had a situation where we were 1.2 to build this dam, which we've got two dams sitting out there. And then we, we wouldn't have this money available to do what we got to do. That's another story.
But I, what you're bringing up, um, is, is an interesting point, because one is almost off by 100%. But to put this in context of the Main Street project, you know, it came in at 6 billion, that was the original bid. So, you know, we, we value-engineered it down to, and, and, you know, now there's no contingency. That was one of the things that got value-engineered out of the price, was we eliminated the contingency. So we, we awarded a project with no contingency. Normally, you've got, what, 10% contingency? 5% or 5% contingency? Um, you can tell I'm not an engineer. And, uh, and so this is putting some contingency back, um, in case you, you know, I don't know, run into fuel oil in the, in the ground.
I will also say that the way it's worded in the bond ordinance is Main Street Master Plan. It's not designated by phase. So if we don't use this on this phase, if we don't need it, this can go to the plaza phase. It can move on to the next phase.
Which is money we don't have to bond in the future.
I don't know, I still feel like I hear Councilwoman Mitchell in my head over and over and over again, truth in budgeting. Remember those, those years, truth in budgeting?
And I think this was part of my concern, I think at the time when we approved the budget, or the bond for the Main Street Master Plan, was when it, when it came into bringing it down, we didn't have any contingency. And I, I may have asked a question about that, but I can't remember. But I know that that was part of my concern when we did that.
Is there any chance that once you get, or could you put on a council agenda, Mr. Council Vice President, when you go to meet again to make the agenda, once we get how much this particular area of oil is going to cost us, might we just let us know what that is, so we get a general idea of where we think it'll stop?
And that will be by change order. So we would, we would have to come back with an award of bid for a change order for that. And, and we hope to, at your first session in January, is our goal is to be back at January 9th with a, with that change order.
Just for the sake of, if anybody wants help with calling MDE and asking where the permit is, I'm sure the five of us would write emails and call. I've had a little, little, but it was big. It was, it was very few, but the ones I did get were big.
So, um, are you, you supportive of moving forward with this? Harden? Ms. Jackson?
Thank you.
As well, so thank you. Next up, we have the easement abandonment for Joneson Pond.
This is a redevelopment for the Johnson Pond development. The easement that we're talking about is a easement that is within the development. It's not going to impact any other properties outside of it. And with the redevelopment of the property, there's two additional big buildings going in, and that they need to occupy that would be over top of the existing easement. So what the developer is working with us to relocate the water lines uh, within the new confines of the, uh, development, and negotiate with us for a, a new easement for the new water lines, thereby allowing the old one to be abandoned.
And the applicant is here for any questions.
Anybody have any question? Just, do, is there a map? Down porch to bottom. What cage on regular? It's a four mile. Do you have the different company name too? Can you see this company too? Oh, there we go.
We are simplifying that plat, that's Exhibit A to show only what we're abandoning. What you have in your package showed also proposed easements. And I think just to simplify this, because the ordinance and the quitclaim deed is only for the easement abandonment, we'll be providing a revised plat for, um, when it advances.
So it's not really necessary to show the new easement. This addresses the abandonment of the old one, and the new easement will be contained within the development plans.
So this is all that we're doing in Village of Hope, correct?
It's in Village of Hope, yes. Yeah, so they're just running the water main in at a different location, so we're abandoning the current location.
Everybody okay with this?
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor?
Um, if it pleases you, Mr. Vice President, um, we will do that, uh, presentation at the next council meeting. Is that okay?
Sounds good. Just, uh, make, just one announcement. We have, uh, make sure everybody comes down December 31st for our downtown Salisbury ball drop. A lot of good stuff happening tonight. It's going to be fun. And, uh, so look forward to seeing everybody, 8:00 PM to midnight, uh, is the New Year's Eve celebration. And fireworks.
And Merry Christmas.
And fireworks as well, so, um, and just Merry Christmas to everybody. Thank you all for being here.
Merry Christmas to you.
Merry Christmas.
I guess we're, we're done? We're adjourned?
We said that very carefully.
Was it gentle or adjourned?